2021 School Committee Meeting. School Committee is just returning from an executive session. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, item four on our agenda is actually recognition of Steve York's service to the school committee, which we have decided to postpone until our April 28th meeting so that we can do this in person. Our next item, number five, is public comment. I believe we maybe have one public comment.
So the, uh, the person who submitted their comment to be in person, Deb Smith, is not on the call.
Okay, all right, so, thank you, Mrs. Dixie, just let us know if she comes into the waiting air, into the waiting room.
I will.
Great, thank you. And there were three written comments that we have all read ahead of time. We'll inform our discussions tonight. Thank you for submitting Teresa Murphy, Ursula Testo, and Paul Holland. All right. Item six, we have approval of items by consensus. Approval of minutes, April 7th, 2021. Is there a motion? Mr. Smaha, seconded by Mr. Fenely, all in favor? That is unanimous. We have acceptance of Wilmington Educational Foundation Curriculum Grants in the amount of $3,348.26. Is there a motion? Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Smaha, all in favor? That is unanimous.
Would you like me to read what those grants were for?
I would like you to read what those grants are for. Thanks, Mr. Raxdale.
Uh, so there's a grant for $912 awarded to Heather Peachey and Michelle Kirchian for supporting science in the library. Uh, and that's for the North and West Libraries, 46 titles. $1,512.26 to Kristin Waldron for the North Intermediate Ukulele Program, matching something similar that has begun at the West. $495 to Carrie Fitch for a program strengthening social emotional skills for our youngest learners. And $429 to Ashley Roko Bauer for NumberSense Software. And so we greatly thank WEF for those generous grants.
Thank you, Mr. Raxdale, and thank you, WEF. Item C, acceptance of the Wilmington Educational Foundation Educators Exploration Grant to Mary Beth Baluk in the amount of $1,500. Is there a motion? Mr. Smaha, seconded by Mrs. Burns, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you again to WEF for your generous donations.
And very quickly, for those who want to know what that's for, uh, she will be, visit the Kennedy Space Center in Florida and attend the Mars Base One Day Camp. Ms. Baluk.
Very exciting. Thank you so much. Item D, we have ratification of the Wilmington Teachers Association Return to Full In-Person Memorandum of Agreement. Is there a motion? Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mr. Fenely, all in favor? That is also unanimous. Thank you for the work of everyone involved in that. We have ratification of the Wilmington School Cafeteria Employee Association Contract 2020 through 2023. Is there a motion? Mr. Smaha, seconded by Mr. Fenely, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you to that team as well. We have a second reading of revised school committee policies. We have the homeschool application. IHBGR, the homeschool policy, IHBGE, homeschool policy, JEB entrance age, JJE, co-curricular and extracurricular activities, and JKAA, physical restraint of students. I'm not going to do this in bulk. I'm just going to see first if there are any questions that you want me to hold out a particular policy to wait on. Mr. Raxdale.
I'd like to hold policy JEB.
And the others, Mrs. Burns? Thank you, Sid. I agree with David, and I'd like to...
I would, thank you, I'm sorry, I have some mute, forgive me. I would second Dave's, um, selection of, of holding that, please.
All right, so we'll hold that. We, so we feel comfortable voting on the others that I've listed. I'll list them just one more time. And then we will discuss JEB. Okay. So we are voting on the homeschool application, IHBGR, IHBGE, JJE, and JKAA. Is there a motion to approve those? Mr. Smaha, seconded by Mr. Fenely, all in favor of approving those policies? That is unanimous. Thank you. Now let's look at JEB, Mr. Raxdale.
So I have just two small edits to this policy. Both of them in the third paragraph, in the second sentence of the third paragraph. Uh, the first is simply that, um, before the word exception, I think we need the word "and" so that it will read "who are seeking an exception." And the second change is that I think we should replace the word "this" before "policy" with the word "the entrance age," because to me, having the way that sentence two follows sentence one makes it sound as though this policy is referring back to considering chronological, chronological age and academic readiness that was mentioned in the previous sentence rather than to the policy as a whole. So I would make those edits so that second, the second sentence of paragraph three reads, "Parents/guardians who are seeking an exception to the entrance age policy should make this request in writing to the building principal by May 1st."
Excellent, thank you. And Mrs. Burns? You're on mute.
Sorry, thank you. I know that we discussed of, of putting some sort of, by, by a criteria, uh, you know, and leaving it as that, it towards the last sentence, um, where it says, "The principal in consultation with the superintendent and an appointed committee will be authorized to make these determinations." I thought it was, um, we were going to add some sort of criteria basis, like based on criteria, leaving that up to the superintendent and his central, you know, and his team to create that process, I guess, for lack of a better term, and assessment to ensure, so that there, there is a structure to base the decision, whatever decision it might be, on. So I didn't know where, um, where the polit, policy committee had sat with that.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. So we focused more on adding some language about what it, what it would look like for parents, guardians, if they were seeking an exception, and left, because there is not, the idea is that the principal in consultation with the superintendent and this committee would make the final determination. And so that may include many things, chronological age, that may include academic readiness, and so that, that criteria could differ child to child. So to have an established set of criteria seems to be like, ooh, that might not, that might not make the most sense, because then it sort of takes away some of the ability of that committee and the superintendent and the principal to make a decision case by case.
Well, I guess, I, I guess, maybe I'm thinking a little bit too deeply on it in the sense that, um, you know, that, that the committee has some sort of criteria to, um, base their, uh, learning readiness or age readiness on, and I guess that's, as opposed to it's, you know, that there is a basis of which that determination is based off of. You know, I'm not trying to limit their ability to make that decision, but, um, and you do have to, you know, it is an individualized situation based on the rationale as to why, you know, the parents and, you know, and/or staff may think, a student may not be ready for, for that particular grade. I just, um, you know, I just, I just want to ensure that there is some protocol, um, in making that determination to, you know, to determine whether a child is academically ready for that grade or defer.
No, I hear it. And I thought, so Dr. Brand, you can jump in, but I think when we discussed this with Alice, there was this, the next step would be for this team to develop what you're saying, a protocol. Okay, so now, what's our protocol? What's the procedure going to be? This is the policy, and so the policy isn't going to dictate any of that, but that the next step would be for Alice to work with a team to develop a procedure or a protocol. That was my understanding, Dr. Brand, is that, or Jesse, is that accurate?
Uh, I will, it's, well, Jesse, do you want to go ahead first?
I was just going to say that was my understanding of the conversation we had when we reviewed the policy was that Alice and, and that team would sort of develop that, but Dr. Brand, I'm sure you can speak more eloquently to it.
Well, I'm not sure about that, but I'll, I'll say that certainly, yeah, that this is a, I think, a classic situation in which, um, policy informs practice, and so, um, uh, i- if you approve this policy or the amendments to this policy, we will, administration will work to adjust a protocol, a set of procedures that will be used. They'll be written in such a manner that it doesn't matter who's in the respective seats. There'll be a fair and uniform way that will be, um, uh, similar across town. It doesn't matter which school we're talking about here, but more a specific set of procedures that will be, uh, to be able to be followed to make, um, uh, appropriate judgments on a case-by-case basis.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
Great question, MJ, thank you. Mr. Smaha?
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering too, um, as, as I'm reading this, if, if, if families, if, if, if parents and families would know what would be, you know, what would be some of the factors that would go into it? And so I don't know, it might not be part of this policy, but part of, you know, going forward with whatever the sort of the protocol is for when you make, make this sort of decision, for families to have an idea of, should my kid, like, because I'm sure there's probably a lot of families that might be sort of like on the fence, like, maybe I should send my kid, maybe, maybe I shouldn't, maybe my kid is an exception, and they might not have any idea about if that would be true or not. So I don't, I don't, it may not even be necessarily part of, of the policy, but I think that should at least be part of the process, I think.
Mr. Raxdale?
The only thing that I would be a little bit concerned about, I mean, I, not that it would be, again, as you said, part of the policy, is that I think that, well, I think if, if parents are interested in this, then, you know, they will inquire, and then there are conversations will ensue about what kind of factors might be, uh, might be involved. But I don't know that we want to be promoting the idea that here are reasons why you might want to ask for an exception to the age policy. Uh, we want, you know, as the, in the regular course of business, children to enroll in kindergarten when they're five and move on to first grade when they're six. And we, I think that the adjustments we've made to this policy give us now the flexibility for parents who, uh, you know, for, you know, for whatever reason that they may, um, believe it's in the best interest of their child to request the exception, but that we don't necessarily need to give them a checklist of, here are the reasons why you might want to consider that. I don't think we would want to be kind of trying to push parents in that direction.
Okay. I agree. Um, Mr. Smaha? You're nodding, I think.
Yeah, I, 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 I think it makes sense. I think it's, um, you know, I think that, you know, perhaps, again, it's, it's not, it's not really part of the policy, so, um, it doesn't, I don't think it's really part of the conversation right now. I think it's part of the process, but I agree, you wouldn't want to hear, here are all the reasons why your kid might be, you know, might have an, an exception to here. I think that might cause more problems and more confusion than any problems that it would, um, than anything it would solve. So, um, I can, I can definitely, uh, see that aspect of it.
All right, and I think, I mean, what we're, what we're encouraging is if parents do believe there is an exception, that they would reach out to the building principal and, and start that conversation. All right, so with those, with the, with the wordsmithing, with the additions by Mr. Raxdale, that's the policy we would be approving. Is there a motion to approve JEB? Mr. Fenely, is there a second? Mr. Raxdale, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thanks, everyone. Thanks for your work on this, and thanks for your thoughtful questions. Um, we have warrants G432, R221, L72, and L73. Is there a motion? Mr. Raxdale, seconded by Mr. Fenely, all in favor? That's unanimous. And payroll ending 4/14/2021. There a motion? Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mrs. Newhouse, all in favor? That is unanimous. Excellent. Mia, we see you. Welcome. Um, next up, we have our winter athletics and summer clinics update by our athletic director, Mia Musio. Thanks for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
Dr. Brand, did you want to say anything, or can we just hand it over?
Uh, no, I'll just, uh, I'll thank, first off, Mia for, um, for being here. This is, um, you know, you've seen a lot of Mia over the course of the last, um, number of months, and inevitably, a lot of that has been associated with, um, trying to best navigate the adjustments and modifications to the athletic program. Um, but as members of the committee know, it's not atypical or unusual to have an update from, uh, from our athletics department, and so Mia's here this evening, and I'll just take this moment and extend to her, uh, our gratitude, my gratitude for, um, the immense work behind the scenes that she's been doing, uh, most, most recently at lay to try and make sure that we have, uh, a selection of activities that allow our students to participate, working within the guidelines to ensure student safety, uh, and doing so with, um, a whole set of challenging restrictions that are making anything but normal. But it's great to have Mia here tonight, and she's going to provide you with this update. For members of the community who are interested, uh, the slide pack that she'll go through in a minute is included in the school committee folder, and you're able to access that, um, uh, online. So, yeah, welcome.
Thank you. Um, should I pull up the presentation, or is that gonna?
Oh, that will appear magically. There you go.
Perfect, thank you. Um, so I just wanted to provide an update. Well, thank you, Glenn, I appreciate all your kind words. I know how much hard work everyone is putting in, in the past, you know, six months. So, um, you know, my goal around these is just to, to provide a winter review for our teams, um, give a little bit of oversight around what we did this winter. And I'm not going to go through and read through every single slide, um, but I do want to make sure that I highlight those student athletes who were honored by the league as well as the state. So, um, we can go to the next slide. Uh, again, just some COVID-19 modifications. Um, you know, we're going to go through winter offerings, individual athletic programs, and then some initiatives and highlights. Uh, this winter, we offered boys and girls basketball, boys and girls hockey, and swim. Uh, I'm going to leave the rest, but luckily, we just got approval for wrestling today. Um, the EEA gave some verbal approval, so that will be happening in the spring season, and we will also have winter cheer during the spring as well. So we can go to the next slide. Just giving some offering levels of what we offered this winter, um, you know, as well as some information about our boys and girls swim program. Next slide. Participation numbers, um, we had 41 hockey, boys hockey, 14 girls hockey, 41 in boys basketball, 27 in girls basketball, and we had 17 swimmers this year, which is great. Next slide. Uh, we're going to just go through some individual athletic programs, um, and, and talk about those student athletes who were honored. Matthew Pandeza was named a league all-star, as well as the team MVP for boys hockey. Alex Fitzler was named the, um, given the coaches award, and just some highlights, the team was involved with two really great fundraisers, one for local heroes, uh, and one around the injured Bishop Feehan hockey player. Next slide. Just some pictures for everyone to take a look at, um, boys hockey this winter. Next slide. Girls hockey, we had, uh, Zoe DeRose was named a league all-star. Ida Bishop was named the team MVP, and Maria Hernandez was awarded the coaches award. Next slide, just some pictures for everyone. We can go to the next one. Boys basketball, um, Tommy Melinson tied the school record with nine three-pointers in a game. Um, he was also named league all-star and team MVP, uh, and James McCarron was, um, given the coaches award. Next slide, again, some pictures for everyone. We can go to the next one. Girls basketball, um, Kylie Ducharme was named a league all-star, the Freedom Division Co-MVP, Team MVP, Boston Herald Dream Team Selection, and a Boston Globe All-Scholastic. She's committed to play at Bentley next year. Uh, Jenna Sweeney was also named a league all-star, um, and given the coaches award. Next slide, just some pictures for everyone. We can go to the next one. Swim, um, we have a co-op with North Reading. I'm not going to read through every single one. Uh, swim does things a little bit differently, and they award based on each individual event. Um, but Ethan Ryan, uh, he was named the Cowboys Swimmer of the Year, as well as an All-League in the Cape Ann League. Kyla Kelly was named All-League, um, as well as a Boston Globe All-Scholastic Honorable Mention. Emma Ryan was an All-League and All-Star. Dot Tran was an All-Star, and Tyler Sheehan was also an All-Star. And their each individual event that they were given an All-League or All-Star in is listed. Some swim pictures for everyone. We can go to the next slide. Uh, I just wanted to go through a couple athletic department initiatives, just to provide an update. Um, I know last time I was here, I talked about our concussion policy. We did finalize that. And geared it towards not just sports-related, but also extracurricular concussion management policy and procedures. Um, I did work in conjunction with the nursing staff to update and, and make sure that we were, um, doing things based on current data, uh, some more inclusive language for students and parents and guardians, um, as well as including our extracurricular programs. For next year, we plan to do a student athlete of the month. There will be a form that's filled out by our coaching staff, um, and nominations will be chosen based, um, on the WHS administration, as well as the coaching staff. Uh, we're going to do that for a male and a female student athlete every month for the school year. I did update, update the varsity letter requirements and guidelines, if anyone wants to take a look. Just to be more specific about what those requirements are, and ultimately state that coaches make that decision. Uh, and, you know, I don't want to take that away from them, but it's really great to have some guidelines and some, some protocols to, to go forward. Uh, we can go to the next slide. Just some highlights as well. Uh, we did host a leadership workshop on February 3rd with core trainings through the MIAA. Uh, we had a ton of kids participate, oh, around 60, um, and it was a great experience. I got to be there during the whole thing. The kids did a great job. Meet our coaches. We are going to put some bios up about all of our coaching staff, um, and those will be on the website shortly. And the last but not least, I really want to thank everyone who helped make the winter season happen. Student athletes, parents, guardians, coaches, facilities and custodial staff, athletic trainer, athletic assistant, faculty manager, nurses, board of health, school committee, and the administration. And definitely, last but not least, a major shout-out to WCTV. They filmed all of our games, livestreamed everything, announced they were at, I would say, 99% of everything. We could not be more grateful, and thank you to those people who volunteered to help make the winter season happen, to, whether that's filming, announcing, above and beyond. So, thank you to everyone. And that's the winter review. Um, I did want to also go through, well, I should ask if there's any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Smaha?
Yeah, hi. I just had a question, um, pertaining to the girls swim. They were the, um, the Cape Ann League champions, and I know that they did, uh, a ceremony, and they had a, a banner, uh, placed over at uh, North Reading High School, and I was wondering, is there anything that's going to be done at, in Wilmington to celebrate that, um, championship?
I am working on a banner right now. Um, just have to work it into, um, you know, purchasing. We're still missing a lot of banners from a lot of our state champs and sectional finals and all of that, so I'm just trying to gather all that information so I can do one order, um, and update the current banners that we have. But yes, I've talked to the swim kids, and we plan to do something for them.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Thanks.
Mrs. Burns? You're on mute.
I, I wish I had that in person, huh? Um, I just wanted to, um, congratulate all the student athletes and those who also competed this fall. I, I, you know, it's, it's all a team effort, and, um, the accolades, not only to those who have stood, uh, stood out, um, to receive these awards, but those who continue to participate because of the passion they have for, um, their sport is just, um, very commendable, and I'm very proud of, of all the teams, um, and the parents in participating, uh, this year in, in sport activities. So I'm just elated to see all these, uh, high achievers in ath, athletics. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Raxdale?
Also wanted to say a, a great big thank you to, I mean, the, the list that Mia just read of all the people that it took to come together to make athletics happen, uh, that it was just a huge, a huge team effort, and, uh, I'm, I'm grateful that we were able to give these opportunities to, to our students this year, and, uh, you know, seeing the, you know, the various awards and honors that they got was, uh, is really gratifying. I also have to just add that the, uh, that list of accolades for Kylie Ducharme, um, in basketball was a particularly impressive list, and I think deserves, uh, special, special mention and special congratulations.
I should also say that she, uh, is a thousand-point scorer and a thousand-point rebounder. I should have added that. So she's going to go up on our banner, and we're, we'll do something next year, uh, when we can be in person and have everyone in the gym and, and have her back and, and honor her at a game.
Oh, and just, and those two, of course.
And just those two things, yeah.
Without, without even saying a thousand rebound career, over a thousand career rebounds and a thousand career points.
Thank you, Mr. Raxdale. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. So now you have something else to share?
I do, I have summer clinics to share with everyone. Um, there is a document, I don't know if we can pull that up.
I can do it, just give me a moment.
No worries. Uh, I can start, though. We are planning to hold our summer clinics this year. Last year, unfortunately, due to COVID, we were unable to do so. Uh, the plan now is to offer, uh, 10 clinics, uh, nine sports, uh, over the course of five weeks for the summer. So here's a list for everyone. Um, we plan to, and I actually need to change that date. It's July 6th, not July 5th. Um, I didn't realize that was a holiday. So this will be our 12th year holding the clinics, run by the athletic department. Uh, we typically have over around 500 participants, which is amazing. So we're going to do actually 10 clinics, uh, that includes boys and girls soccer. So, and we're going to add, we added tennis this year, and my hope for the future is that we are going to continue to add and, and shake things up a little bit, um, and have some additional sports on here. So, uh, all the clinics will run five days per week, except for one, because we have a holiday. For a total of 23 hours, they'll be from 9:00 to 2:00. Uh, this is a decrease in hours. The cost of clinic will be $200 per week. Um, and additionally, also note, this will be an increase of the cost of the 175 that was charged over the past six years. All the clinics will have all the COVID-19 protocols. Um, additionally, the athletic department will work in conjunction with the board of health and the nurses to make sure that we are promoting this health and safety of all of our participants. And then I believe the, we have a schedule that we can, a schedule document that we can pull up. Thank you. Oh, actually, sorry, we have, if you go up, sorry, Tristan. In addition to the summer clinics, we, the Wilmington High School Athletic Department is going to offer a summer strength and conditioning program called Prep for Success. This is a six-week program that will begin on July 6th, not July 5th. Um, my fault. I think it's really important that we focus on strength and conditioning, um, prepping kids. This will be for grades eight through 12, uh, whether they're athletes or not athletes, or they just want to participate. Um, and it will be my And it will be Monday, Wednesday, Friday, seven to eight thirty AM. There will be a cost to these fifty dollars a week or two fifty for the all six weeks. I think this is going to be a great addition to our clinics, a great addition to our athletic department. And it's something I've been involved with in other schools and it has been really great. The last sheet is just a schedule of our clinics. And just some details. The last thing is we will be going to family ID for registration for, for athletics at the high school. And we'll also be using family ID for registration for our summer clinics. There will be information, all of this information will go on the athletic website at the end of the week with every ounce of information that everyone needs. And that's it for me for summer clinics.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments? I know we're all excited to see the clinics return this year. So we thank you for coordinating and getting that up and running. And I know our families will be excited.
Yes, we're excited to see them back out there. And that's it from the athletic department. Thank you all very much.
Thanks for being here, Mia. It's very nice to see you.
Thank you. You guys too.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, item eight, we have our superintendent's report. Dr. Brand.
Thank you and good evening. There are a number of items under this section this evening. We'll start though with Ms. Peters who's joined us. And the first item is the Wilmington High School prom. Just before Ms. Peters takes over here, just some context for this. As I think members of the committee are aware, and certainly undoubtedly some from the community. Prom, not unlike many other activities, has become a more difficult and challenging endeavor to consider and to contemplate as we try and navigate the pandemic. Recently, the Department of Education came out with some guidance that effectively in short strongly discouraged school districts from holding prom activities this year. And, and I think that I'll, I'll start with that as a, as a, as a point of context, if you will. For a variety of reasons, of course underscored by concerns around what prom is typically entails and the interactions with and between students. However, not unlike some of the other pieces of guidance, ultimately it is left to the local level to make determinations. And this item is here for you this evening because of that very thing. That, you know, we have a commitment by and led by Ms. Peters. And I'll set this up in that way, who has been working extremely hard behind the scenes to work with some representatives of the parents group and others to try and come up with a plan that could be perhaps manageable and could be able to be supportive. And so what's here for you this evening? And, and I apologize for this, a somewhat late addition into your packet, but it is in your packet. She's going to go through the plan here. And, and this is just reflective of the fact that this has been ongoing literally up to late yesterday, if not this morning. As she continues to consult with Dr. Curdo, the school's physician, who we have working in the background with us as well as Doreen Crowe, our coordinator of health services. We're here, and Linda's here ultimately with a plan and a proposal for you. And, and I think that it appropriate that as a committee in this particular case. You, you, you weigh in and provide your support if this is indeed a proposal that you're comfortable with. As Linda might expand upon, I can tell you, not unlike so many other things, that districts all around are doing a whole host of things. Some are not offering prom activities. Some are doing something that looks completely different from a prom. Arguably, you might not define it as a prom. But the commitment that, I'll say we, but it's really Linda has, is to still try and provide our high school students with something that resembles somewhat closely a prom. However, given the circumstances, given the guidance from Desi, and given obviously the overarching health concerns, we want to make sure that you as a committee, as our governing body, are comfortable with this proposal. And so with that as a setup, I'll ask Linda to join and if you want to walk the committee through what the plan is right now.
Thank you, Dr. Brandon. Thank you all for having me here tonight. I appreciate your time. We did start talking about senior activities way back at the beginning of March and prom was one of those activities that had come up and we thought about all the ways that we could plan something for our students that would be prom-like. With some of the restrictions being lifted in Massachusetts and in New Hampshire, we did decide to pursue. Looking at a New Hampshire venue which offered us a capacity that was larger than one hundred indoors and one fifty outdoors. So we did look into a New Hampshire venue which we've used before and has been very good. And when we did find or learn of Jesse's recommendations on April first, Dr. Brand and I decided to put a halt on planning and look further into providing more restrictions, providing more protocols around safety and health. I did consult with Mrs. Crowe, who also consulted with Dr. Curdo. I spoke to Dr. Curdo myself yesterday. And based on all of the conversations we've had, based on my conversations with parents, we have put together what we think is a plan and a proposal that would provide a safe environment to have this event. The measures that we would like to implement, I will just read through them. We would like students to provide a negative test result administered within seventy-two hours of the event unless a student has been diagnosed with COVID nineteen in the past ninety days, or it has been two weeks after fully vaccinated. We also would like within twenty-four hours, all attendees to submit a COVID nineteen screening survey via Google. That is not unusual to any of the events that we have. We do ask students to provide that type of screening. We also want all attendees to practice hand hygiene before, during, and after the event. We will practice social distancing throughout the venue and throughout the evening. We are placing limitations on indoor activities by providing a tent and an outdoor dance floor so that there are limited crowding around inside. So there will be outside and inside mingling. We will require masks to be worn during the entire event, except while eating. We are requiring that cohorts of friend groups sit together and stay together. We do have guidelines around eating and the serving of food. They are the same for Massachusetts and New Hampshire and we will follow those guidelines. And we will follow the Massachusetts guidelines for dancing, which allows dancing, provided masks are worn. We did originally look at planning to hire buses to transport our students both to and from the venue. In consulting with Dr. Curdo, he felt that that would not be in the best interest in terms of safety for our students and felt that they should travel in smaller friend groups as opposed to on the bus. That's it. And I do appreciate you're listening to all of this. I know the parents do. I know they're very anxious to hear what you think.
I'll, I'll just add, if I could, thank you so much, Linda, and again for, for her leadership with all that she has going on. I think that this certainly, this, this topic of prom represents one, just as many examples. And I know the committee knows this, of, of her dedication and commitment to her students. I can't tell you the amount of time and additional hours that she has put into thinking about this and researching options and really, and really framing this for you. Some have asked in the last week or so, is it typical for prom to come before the school committee for approval? And I would say to you that no, it's not, at least not during my time here. However, I, I point out two things and hence why it's ultimately here for your consideration and I think appropriately your approval. Policy J J, student travel. One of your policies, the leading passage into the paragraph, all student trips, which include late night or overnight travel must have prior, prior approval of the school committee. I, I think that that falls into that category. That's number one. And number two, very squarely aligning the lines of where we started this, and that is Desi guidance that effectively urged school districts not to hold a prom. We are obviously recognize, we recognize that we're going against that guidance. And it's so for, for those two factors or those two reasons in which it's here for your consideration. And I'm seeking your approval if you're in support of this tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Brand. Thank you, Ms. Peters. Questions, comments? Mrs. Burns?
Hi, thank you so much for putting that together, Ms. Peters, and all the time involved in arranging for this. I have a comment and then I've got three questions. Just to speak to Dr. Brand's comment about Desi guidance, you know, it's and it's my own opinion that it's a little bit hypocritical as we give districts deadlines to get kids in person, full-time to to, to then put a restriction on these senior activities. I just, I trying to think about it as to how can they spend six hours in a, in a school building together, yet can't be able to socially distance at a venue for their last year in celebration. So that, you know, I'm still waiting for a response up to the rationale with that, but in saying that, I have a couple of questions for you. Will the promenade take place as it's been our tradition prior to this prom?
We do hope to have a promenade. The parents usually plan that and I think they're in the process of planning it.
Okay. Will there be extra chaperones for this event just to ensure safety protocols are supported or?
We always invite chaperones. I don't know how many will attend, but we do invite twenty to thirty teachers. Can you not hear me? I can't hear you.
No, we can hear, we can hear you, Ms. Peters. Thank you.
Okay. I, I'm the only one. I have bad internet connection. My apologies. Are guests invited or is it just going to be the seniors class? Very good. And what's the date and time of the event?
It's May thirteenth and it's six to ten.
Very good. Thank you. That's all I had. Thank you so much, Ms. Peters.
Mr. Fennelly?
A, a comment and a question. I'll start by agreeing with what MJ said. I think it's great that we're able to try to put something together for the senior class. It's obviously been a challenging time for everybody, but it's possible it's in this proposal and I didn't see it. So forgive me if that's the case, but are students gonna have to sign this agreement or indicate their understanding of it before they're allowed to purchase their ticket or, or attend the event?
Yes, I think, I, I think they will, they don't know the protocols yet. They don't know this, this whole proposal yet.
Sure.
I brought it to you first. I know that parents discuss some things with me before I developed the proposal, but they will agree to this if they, if they choose to come. It will be because they agree to this.
Thank you, Ms. Peters.
Thanks, Mr. Fennelly. Other questions or comments for Linda? Mr. Smaha and then Mr. Raxdale.
My first, I just have a short question, but a, a short comment, I guess, as well too. I just, thank you so much, Ms. Peters. I know how much work you've put into this. I think this plan makes a lot of sense to me considering it's going to be outdoors and it's and then all of the other things that have been listed there. I think it's fantastic. I think it's a great opportunity for kids to get back to some sort of normalcy, you know, because they've really been, you know, robbed in a lot of ways of their senior year. So thank you so much for, for putting this together and, and putting in all those hours and really working towards this. You know, that's very, very important. So thank you. My, I guess my, my, my smaller question is, is how many students are expected to? Do you have any sense of how many students you think are going to be wanting to go?
I, I don't have a sense of that. We have a hundred and ninety-two seniors. I, I would think between a hundred twenty and a hundred and fifty.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Raxdale?
I wanted to just ask for a few details about some of these bullets. So one of them says that attendees will practice hand hygiene before, during, and after the event. What, what do you see that looking like? So I guess, you know, sure, everyone gets a squirt of sanitizer on their way into the venue and on their way out. What are you seeing? Is, how is that going to work when you say during? Is there some kind of interval during which, I don't know, everyone needs to pass by the sanitizer? What are you thinking for that?
On the table so that, you know, after they, you know, ha, after they eat, they will sanitize their hands and put, when they put, take their mask off and put their mask on. They're, they're used to doing that in the building. Those are the procedures we ask them to use when they're, take their mask briefs. They use hand sanitizer to take when they take their mask off and then again to put their mask back on. So those are the kinds of hand sanitizing that we expect. Our hand hygiene that we expect during the event.
Okay, thanks. And a couple bullets down. It says that limitations will be in place to limit indoor activities and a tent and outdoor dance floor will be provided. What kind of limitations are there going to be to limit indoor activities?
Because we have an outdoor, the outdoor venue is also available to us as long as we provide a tent and a dance floor. Then we can limit the number of students that are inside and have some outside as well. Those are the limitations, actually. Maybe limitations wasn't the right word to use there, but
So it's, so it's more, it's more like an opportunity or an incentive that the, the dance floor is going to be outside where presumably they want to spend a lot of the time. So we have a reason for them to be outside rather than inside. Okay, and so two later, it says it will be required that cohorts of friend groups must sit together. So how is that going to work? Are people going to have to establish a cohort that they plan to come and sit with in advance? I'm, I'm trying to envision what that looks like.
We always have table seating and they choose their tables. They choose who they want to sit with. This happens at every prom. So they usually do sit with their friends. It's just, we just want to maintain that, make sure that that does happen. So they will.
Okay, so that, that, that's already an expectation from, from, from past proms. And it will just be, I guess, a little clearer this time that you can't go around and just mingle with other tables.
Yeah, that's right.
While you're eating.
That's correct.
All right, yeah, those were, those are my questions. And again, thank you for all the work that you put into, to make this happen. In some ways, it would have been easier just to throw our hands in the air and say, well, sorry. It's being discouraged. We just can't do it. But I'm, I'm really grateful for all the work that was put in to make this something that we can do.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. I'm not going to repeat what everyone said. Thank you for, for doing this, putting this together. I understand the bus. I'm, I'm a little, there's a little part of me that's nervous about all of them driving. And I, I mean, maybe they'll be taking limos. I, I'm not sure what the plan will be, but I'm sure families will be having working this out with their, with their children to, to make sure that we're all staying safe. And the timing of it seems like they'll be traveling home rather early. So, but the bus, I mean, I understand the bus, but it certainly makes me feel a little less nervous when at least we're transporting, but I understand. And I, I appreciate Dr. Curdo being involved in this. I think that that helps everyone to know that we're doing our due diligence to make sure that we're setting up protocols that will keep students and volunteers chaperones safe. So if there's nothing further, is there a motion? You would like us to take a motion and vote on this, correct? So, Mrs. Newhouse?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Ms. Peters' plan for the senior prom.
Seconded by Mrs. Burns? And all in favor of approving this plan for the And all in favor of approving this plan for the senior prom for 2021? That is unanimous. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Peters.
Thank you so much.
Continued good luck to you as you navigate all of this. I know that this is not, not easy, so we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I know the families appreciate it. I've gotten a lot of families saying, she's doing so much. Oh, my goodness, she's working so hard and really listening to students and families. So I know it's, they appreciate you as well.
Thank you so much.
All right. So next, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Dr. Brand.
No, I was just thinking, thanking Linda. Uh, we can move on. Sure. Item 8B, there's nothing right now in the packet, uh, but I'll speak to this briefly and we will update the packet because there's a, an item that's fairly fresh off the press, literally for this. And this item is the Massachusetts School Building Authority or MSBA update. As you know, there's been obviously a lot of discussion and updates along the way, but some terrifically good news today, in fact. Earlier today, Paul, myself, Jeff Hollis, town manager, and George Hooper attended the scheduled Massachusetts School Building Authority Board meeting. And I'm pleased to be able to report that at that board meeting, uh, the Wildwood Elementary School and that respective statement of interest was invited in and the town of Wilmington was invited into the eligibility period. And so this is what we have been hoping for and working hard back. It started, I guess, in May, I believe it was, when thanks to this committee, you voted along with the Board of Selectmen to authorize the superintendent, myself, to submit statement of interest for all of our elementary schools. I will just share a couple of quick facts. There were 71 core applications and the distinction for the MSBA grant program is between accelerated repair. There's two, two programs within the MSBA grant funding program. One is accelerated repair, which generally takes care of windows, envelope issues, boilers, doors, that sort of thing. And then what's referred to as the core program, which is new construction or renovation. We learned today that there were 71 core applications. You may recall that that number was vetted down to 30 or thereabouts, uh, about a month and a half ago, I think it was. We were one of 15 districts that were invited into the program. So 71 to 15. So a great, a great opportunity now before us inviting, uh, being invited in. Work actually begins immediately and tomorrow Paul and I will be attending along with some others from the town on orientation to module one, which really starts the process to ramp up our involvement in this program. So I anticipate that this will be a, maybe not a regular every meeting agenda update, but, but update, but certainly periodically as we keep, uh, obviously the committee and the community informed of the developments. As has been said previously, this is a long process. This is the beginning of that process and a journey that will take a, a number of years. But most importantly, I think, uh, to, to underscore for our community members the fact that there is plenty of opportunities for the community to be getting, uh, to be further involved in these conversations and considerations for what our future looks like at the elementary level in the town of Wilmington. There is not a, uh, there's not a template that's been approved per se. What has been approved though is that the Wildwood needs attention. The MSBA recognizes that and they know that they could, we could use their assistance and that's why we're in. So I, I do want to share that with you. And like I said, the, uh, the memo that was released today by MSBA officially, we will, we will get included in the packet. Moving on, uh, item C, oh, sorry.
I just wanted to see if anyone, any questions or comments about, about that update? Mr. Raxdale?
So this is truly outstanding news and I'm really grateful for all the work it took to make it happen. And people, people should understand that it's not just about having the most need. You really have to demonstrate it. Like you can't just say, we really have an old school and it's in bad shape and you know, here's a, you know, a quick, a quick video of, you know, the, the, you know, the, the ceiling not looking so good. There is a lot of work that is put into this, this procedure of demonstrating, you know, the need that we have. And not just from a, like a, just a pure, you know, facilities, you know, is the paint peeling, but just, you know, from an educational perspective, you know, what is the educational suitability of the, of the building and how it actually affects the education of the students that are there? So this was a huge lift for the district and we're, you know, I'm, I'm very grateful and we're, you know, we're lucky to be invited in. There's a little luck involved as well. But you don't get here without putting an awful lot of work. And there's an awful lot of work yet to go, but I want to say thank you to everyone, uh, who was involved on the town and the school administration side for getting us to this point.
Thanks, David. MJ?
I would echo David's sentiments and to congratulate actually the central office team and the municipality because these six SOIs went in within a very quick period of time, just as the pandemic was surging and grateful we waited a long time for the response and the, the amount of work involved in, in creating six of them. And to have our most, you know, the one that we're most in need of be accepted is just, it's huge. And I just want to congratulate and thank Superintendent Brandon and his team for compiling all of that information and submitting it on time, I believe, uh, to the MSBA backlog spring to get to this result. I know we have, as Mr. Raxdale spoke to, I know we have a lot of work yet before us, but this is the first step. And I'm very excited about the evolution of this and, and seeing a new school come to Wilmington, uh, elementary school coming to Wilmington. Thank you so much again for, for your yeoman's work.
Thank you, MJ. All right. Yeah.
Thank you. The next item, uh, eight, uh, HC middle school principal update. As, as members of the committee know, uh, we have, um, uh, been in a state, oh, sorry, my apologies. So we've been in in a state of, uh, having in place an interim principal with Dr. Jeanette Cork since, um, since about this time last year, actually a little bit more than that. But I did want to share with the community that earlier today I sent out, uh, sent out an announcement to both the staff as well as the, uh, parents and guardians and families of them at the middle school. Making, uh, making an announcement around, uh, my decision for the principalship there. And as noted again, this item will be updated to the packet. This was released earlier today. And so it's, uh, it's not, it's not in the, uh, public packet, but we will make sure that it's uploaded. Stability and continuity, as I outlined in, in my, uh, my letter, I think is really important for students, for families, uh, for staff, really for everyone in a school community. And as I've come to learn since, uh, the beginning of my tenure here, the middle school in Wilmington has unfortunately seen its, um, its share of transitions within the principalship office and the principal's office. In fact, since 2013 and 14, there have been six different individuals who have served, who have served in that, uh, in that chair, in that office. And that's a lot. That's a lot of transition, a lot of change in my opinion, in a relatively short period of time. And so with that, after careful consideration and the belief in that importance, that importance of stability, I did make the decision to appoint Dr. Jeanette Cork as the permanent principal to take over that role officially come July 1st. She, uh, Ms. Cork, Dr. Cork, sorry, has 15 years of public education experience, including 11, uh, as a middle school teacher before she transitioned to the role of assistant principal. She was hired in Wilmington in 2016 in that role as assistant principal. And, uh, there are a number of qualities that I think as I've gotten to know her and her work make her a strong candidate for that position and that leadership role at this time in our community. Including first and foremost, her knowledge and experience in middle school education. And, um, as important as anything, her commitment to students and in particular students of that age. As I also outlined in my announcement, um, again, that we'll make sure it's broadly socialized. I, I have great confidence in Dr. Cork because I've gotten to know her, not just her abilities as an educational leader, but also equally important, I think, is the commitment that she shares with myself in terms of the need for review of the middle school program. And to, to really with that establish a, a framework for, for change and to pursue opportunities that I, I think are timely and important. For the reasons of that transition I pointed out a few moments ago, um, there's been certainly an impact on the ability to move forward some program initiatives and planning for improvement. And that's in no way to suggest the middle school staff have not been working tremendously hard to support their students and their families. But I'm clearly, when you have a transition in leadership, it impacts the school on a day-to-day, short and long-term basis. And I, I'm excited about the opportunity to work alongside Dr. Cork in partnership as we embark upon this middle school program review. I'll speak about that and a little bit more in my, in my goals update later tonight. And I look forward to partnering with her, uh, in, in helping to continue to move the school forward. I'll also just say that in the announcement that did go out, um, it obviously leaves a an opening, uh, in the assistant principal position that she's vacated. Uh, and so we will conduct a search that will be an open search and we'll get that posting up for a, a permanent replacement for her position in the, in the next coming days. There will be opportunities for, um, both staff and members of the community to volunteer to be a part of that assistant principal search process. So I'll pause there. I'm not sure if folks have any questions. I'm happy to take any if you'd like, uh, but I did want to share that news tonight.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Mr. Smaha?
I'll just say that this is really fantastic news concerning everything that the middle school, um, has been through. I think this, um, I think it makes a lot of sense, especially given, um, you know, her history at the school. I think it's, it's the logical, uh, choice. And I think it's really what's gonna be the first step in, in sort of reviewing and shifting some of the, um, things that haven't worked, um, at the middle school. So I'll just thank you and thank Dr. Cork, um, as well, um, for, for, for taking this important, what I think is, is, is one of the most important first steps is having some steady leadership over there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smaha. Mr. Raxdale?
I want to congratulate Dr. Cork on this and, uh, echo Mr. Smaha that I think that having her permanently in this position is a key part of moving forward with the program review that we've begun. And, you know, beginning to, you know, sort of get our house in order, um, at the middle school and really lay the groundwork to move forward, uh, at that school. And so I'm, uh, pleased, pleased that she's going to, uh, be taking on this role and am congratulating her as well.
Mr. Raxdale, any other comments? Okay. And I, I'll just say, um, congratulations as well. And I just want to, I do want to make sure we are putting her in a position to be successful so that we're providing supports. And I think the fact that she's been here is, is good because keeping someone in that space. But I also want to make sure we're setting her up for, for what feels like she's being mentored and striving toward a success in that building, which we know has been, has been hard for our past, um, principals there. So would love to hear more about that plan as we move forward. But big congratulations to Dr. Cork and, um, and thank you. And that brings us to item D, which is return to full in-person learning. Dr. Brand and-
Yeah, thank, thank you. Yeah, the, um, the, the final area and certainly, uh, last, but, but not in any way least. Now, there are two items really that we wanted to just spend a couple of minutes updating. Uh, of course, you as a committee on and also the community that we are thinking about. We have gotten off by all accounts to, as I've said previously, um, really a very solid start with the return of our elementary students. Of course, we are with anticipation, looking forward to the return of our middle and high school students, um, immediately following the April break. But as we think about that full return, um, pre-K to 12, there are probably two, there are more than two, but at least, uh, for this evening, two items that sort of arise to the surface that we want to just spend a couple of minutes talking about and share, um, share both thinking and, and plans that are unfolding. The first is homework. And so, um, I'm, I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Elliott, uh, to sort of walk you through some of our thinking. This is a, this is a topic that surfaced. Um, we expected that it would and really wrestling with how best to contend with homework as our students return, knowing that they are transitioning back to not quite a sense of normalcy for them coming back from the hybrid model to full all-day, you know, five-day-a-week in-person learning. Um, and so with that, Christine, if you want to take it-
Happy to. Um, let me share the screen. So, um, we've had multiple conversations with the building leadership teams and talking about this with lots of different perspectives on homework. So this, the homework, Paul, it is a school, uh, school committee policy. So we did want to bring it to you for review as well this evening. We are recommending, uh, based on the input we, we have received, that we make some modifications to the guidelines for the amount of time spent at home with homework. As Dr. Brand said, you know, many of our students, um, younger and older, um, we assume will feel that change. And our elementary students, I'm sure already are sleeping well at night after long days, um, with that new routine for them being in person daily. So we, uh, definitely want to support both the academic growth and the social emotional growth of our students. So with these guidelines, we are, um, suggesting that we reduce the number of minutes. Um, you can see on this chart based on what the original school guidelines are for homework, school, uh, committee policy. But we also want to promote the idea that we should be prioritizing, um, independent reading, working on long-term projects and preparing for tests and quizzes as the priority homework to be given and that, you know, we're thoughtful about not giving homework for the sake of giving homework, but, um, you know, focusing on these three priority areas as well as keeping in mind the amount of time students are spending on homework. Noting that there are some situations with accelerated classes that may have different expectations and may require additional time. And again, you know, it's a guideline and not a hard, fast rule, um, but just something for, um, for educators and families to be aware of and in seeking your input on this at this point.
Ms. Mason? All right. I can't see anyone because of the screen share, but so I'm just, I have, are you, is this the actual policy that we're?
So this is the modified revision. And if you scroll down, I'm assuming you want to see the minutes from, this is the policy below. Um, and then the actual minutes are down here. What, what? This is our current length per day. So they've been decreased. So for example, now it's 10 minutes at first grade instead of 15, 20 minutes at second grade, 30 minutes at third grade, 40, fourth grade, 50, et cetera. So it's some, a slight reduction.
I'm just, so I'm, I'm sorry. I'm just wondering if this should have, if this should go to the policy subcommittee before coming to the full school committee, but I'll hold that thought there. Mrs. Burns?
One of the components to this guidance or a policy is that, um, an inconsistency between, um, schools, um, and grades. And I, I'm wondering if there's been any discussion to try to ensure that there's more, um, consistency, uh, because I know one of the be, haven't been on the board when this was first created, um, almost eight, eight or nine years ago, um, but I don't think it really firmly took root, um, until the six years ago. Um, I just want to make sure, because that's an important component as well. I think as we look at, the minute piece is the consistency where some grades or some classes are getting, um, twice as much homework as, you know, like for instance, at the middle school between the houses, how some fifth grade, uh, sixth grade classes are getting more homework in their classes than others. And this, I think, one of the big fundamental, um, rationale behind this is making sure that there is a, a balance and consistency. And I think that the time limit, limits, as you said, Ms. Elliott, that, um, it, it's to give guidance as to what that looks like for educators. But, um, I think another huge- But I think another huge component in the social emotional pieces is a balance of work amongst the the grade levels. And I just didn't know if that came up in your discussion and how that may be approached.
Sure. And, you know, I think that that's a, an issue regardless of returning to full in person. I think those are conversations that are always ongoing. But I think that that's actually part of that is what brought about this conversation to specifically modify things for the remainder of the spring. Because there are definitely varying opinions at this juncture, whether or not we should be having homework at all, whether or not we should be doing extra homework to make up for any academic loss. So there's all kinds of conversations around this. Which is why, you know, we've only, you know, have our elementary students back at this point, but felt that it's really important to start to have this conversation and get out in front of it for the spring. You know, we haven't had issue, we haven't heard from families specifically with any concerns at this point. We wanted to get out in front of it and make sure, because even our educators have very strong feelings about it and feel differently about it. So we wanted to at least begin the conversation and and be able to make some recommendations around what we need to do moving forward and continue those conversations.
Oh, I absolutely commend you for doing that because I'm I'm all about being proactive. But I think what that's one in the same though, I think, you know, that imbalance of inconsistency with homework delivered speaks directly to that what you've, what you're proposing. You know what I mean? If one grade is getting, you know, let's say if the sixth grade is getting 120 minutes consistently of homework where others are only getting maybe 59, you know what I mean? There's an imbalance that for the same reason that you're looking at this to try to get ahead of it. It's kind of, you know, it's like a cylindrical thing. One impacts the other, I think, is what I'm trying to say. So I just, I ask as you have continued to have these conversations to to kind of be mindful of that. And I'm not not knowing what the conversations you've had thus far with the educators and the teachers, you know, that may be mute for, you know, the duration of the spring, but as I said, I do want to commend you for taking charge and and driving this and trying to see how we can balance that, you know, as we move forward for the rest of the year. Thank you.
All right, I'm just, I'm just going to jump in here. I think that I, I can't see everyone, but I think that maybe we should sort of, this is an introduction, but we should put this on hold and bring this to the policy subcommittee and then we can do that quickly. And bring it back at the end of the month. I'm sorry, I just, I look for other people to weigh in. Mr. Raxton?
I I agree with that. I I don't, I mean, I don't object to what I'm hearing, but I think that this needs a little bit more thorough consideration and this, the modifications that are being suggested are not actually being made from our current policy IKB. Because the time recommendations were eliminated when the policy was approved in 2018. So I I think we're not even working from the current homework policy. I I would like to look at this in the subcommittee before we go forward.
Is that okay with everyone? I'm kind of scrolling through. Just give me a nod. Okay. All right. So we're gonna, we're gonna just pause on this and we'll bring it to the policy subcommittee. We can certainly do that quickly. And we'll bring something back to the full committee definitely by the 20th. I'm sorry, it won't be just in time for the start, but it'll be close enough, I hope. Okay. All right. Thanks, Ms. Elliott.
Thank you.
All right. And then B, we have supporting learning during quarantine. Dr. Brand?
Just very briefly on this, we we do, we certainly do as we we turn to full in person and already unfortunately have seen the reality of positive cases and the impact that that has on placing into quarantine more students than in the hybrid model. When we were spaced out at six feet distance, that is just, that is just a reality. It's not just a Wilmington reality. It's everywhere. We and I remain committed to trying to maximize in person learning to the greatest extent possible. And I can share with the committee that after speaking with, after speaking with my my middlesex colleagues recently, superintendent colleagues, I can tell you that there are a handful of districts, at least at our last conversation late last week, where as a school system, their response to a positive case in a classroom was to quarantine that classroom. As opposed to putting into quarantine, say, four, five, six or more students if there was a positive case. And again, just just to be clear, making sure that we're, we're understanding this, right? We've shrunk the distance between students. The CDC has not adjusted the close contact determination. And so that's resulting in an uptick in close, in close contacts. There are some other school systems not too far from us where a positive case leads to that whole, that whole class being shifted to remote, fully remote. That's not at the present time, what I I think is most appropriate or best. And it's not what I think our community is ultimately looking for. It's maximizing the greatest extent to the greatest extent possible in person learning. But there's clearly some trade offs and there's some tension with that. And that tension, if you will, is that when students go into quarantine, it could be a good number of students in a particular class. Far more again than what we were experiencing, say, three months, two months ago. And so we are, we are grappling with that reality. And we have, we're in the process of finalizing a plan that comes through both our conversations with the school committee as well as the the WTA in terms of how best to to navigate that and how best will we facilitate some degree of support for learning for our students who are placed into quarantine for COVID related reasons. Different and certainly very distinct from just a student who says is sick or or ill from school. So the the approach that we are that we really now have finalized, and now we need to socialize this both amongst staff as well as the community will look a little bit different at our four different grade bands. By four, I'm meaning the early childhood levels, elementary, middle and high. And so as we now have finalized the agreement that the school committee authorized earlier this evening and with the with the WTA, we will, we will package that information together and we will share that with families and of course our staff too, to make sure we're on the same page. Let me just be clear, we intend to still do the very best we can to support the learning of our students who are in that unfortunate position of being placed into quarantine. But clearly it can't look the same. It can't be the same as if they were in school. And so we're going to try our best to support that as we move forward for these last couple of months for the remainder of this year. And that certainly could carry over into the fall, but that's, that's a different story for a different point in time. So more definitive information on that to come, but I just wanted to touch upon that briefly. I'm happy to take questions if there are from members of the committee.
Great, thank you. Any questions about that? For now? No, I I think, and I think my only, that's not a question, more a comment, but just to to be clear about the number of students heading into quarantine due to the shorter, just obviously we're at three feet, three to four feet. And so the CDC is still at six feet. I know this has been said a few times, but I am still getting some questions from families who are, who are confused. I mean, what if it, what does it mean? And so I think what we've seen just within the first couple of weeks is if there's one case, we're seeing more students have to go into quarantine than we were prior because we were, everyone was at six feet. So you could actually be in your classroom for the day. And there could be a positive case and there were actually no close contacts because everyone was kept six feet apart. That is significantly different now. And so what we will see are more and more quarantining potentially as we, as we move through, depending on the number of cases in Wilmington. So I just wanted to, is there, I'm not sure you want to add anything else about that, but I do think that has come up a few times is just
Well, that that is absolutely the case. The other, the other factor just to keep in mind is the impact on transportation as well, too. Right? We, we, we have, we have returned to loading our buses, if you will, with students as we normally did. And and while it's true to say, my understanding is is that our general student ridership is down from say, the beginning of last school year, more families have made the decision to return their child to the bus, which which is is terrific. Many still have decided to to transport students themselves, but what we know from experience over the last two weeks is that a positive case not only has the absolute potential to impact and lead to close contacts within a classroom, but also on the bus. And the reason for that is we, we are following the DUCY guidelines. We are putting students, if, and this doesn't hold true in all of our buses, if the capacity is not there and doesn't warrant it, but students are able to sit right next to each other. A seat right in front of another could have four students. And if, if there was a positive case and that ride was more than 15 minutes, that would in effect lead to three close contacts and following the respective guidelines, those three students, to use that example, would have to be placed into quarantine as close contacts. So, so its impact, you know, the the result of this is not just in the schoolhouse, it is also on the bus as well, too.
Thank you. And I, this idea of supporting learning during quarantine is is a topic taken very seriously by the teachers, by the administration, by the school committee, the district, that this, we're gonna, we're committed to in person. But we also know that there needs to be a commitment to learning when when children are in quarantine. So I just wanted to make that clear that this is something that is being discussed and that people feel really passionately about making sure we have a plan moving forward, which Dr. Brand will will start to get out there shortly. All right, there is no, oh, sorry, Mr. Raxton?
Yeah, I quickly that I think it's unfortunate. I really hope that we were able to kind of reconcile this contradiction between saying that and, you know, having lots of evidence to demonstrate that it's safe for students to be at a three to four foot distance. Except now that anyone who is within six feet of a positive case needs to suddenly go out of in person learning and be and be quarantined. It's you know, an unfortunate, you know, dis- disjunction here between, you know, the evidence on the one hand and on the other. So I hopefully we get that resolved so that we're not dealing with so many kids being forced into quarantine in the first place.
Hundred percent. Thank you, Mr. Raxton. All right. There is no old business. We'll move right into new business. Item A, superintendent goals update. That is you, Dr. Brand.
Thank you. Now, within your your packet and also to be added to the public packet available online, I have a very brief update on on the three goals that I presented to the committee back near the beginning of the school year in the fall. And so I just wanted to circle back to this, although the year is not over, certainly. It's timely nevertheless. And so if I may, I'll just provide a couple of updates here. And we'll go to, thank you. I think Tracy, you're working that. So there were three goals and let me just start and preface this to say that, you know, thinking back a number of a number of months now, hopes were high that things would settle down more so from you know, the contending with the pandemic and trying to navigate that. And the fact of the matter is, and I, and I respectively know that this committee knows that it's been anything but that. Things have been continuously busy and pulling not just myself, but but really all of our staff in a whole host of directions. And so but I'm, but I, but I'm being honest in this, in this update, and I hope that you see that reflected through throughout here as I give you a bit of a sense of where some activities happened and others unfortunately have require revisions. The first goal was an intersection with the the high school and the the work that is ongoing in the background and sometimes more the foreground or certainly it'll return to so with NEASK and the accreditation process of the high school. Ms. Peters has obviously spoken about this in the past. And she is also working, you know, respectively at a, at a slower weight, at a slower rate and NEASK has has adjusted some of their timelines as well, too, as we're through this accreditation process. But but what is ongoing there at the high school is the development of the vision of a graduate. And just I'll pause on that to say that this is something that I've spoken to Linda about, about bringing forth to this committee. And I think that that is something that is not only important to share for feedback, but ultimately at the end to have you as a, as a school committee to vote to approve that vision of a graduate. It is a, it a capstone, if you will, of really not only what the four years of high school should ultimately lead to in terms of what that vision, what that, the belief, the core belief is and what our graduates have and what they embody. But really, if you think about that on a more, on a broader level, it is the vision of a graduate of the Wilmington Public Schools. But that that's work that is unfolding and the intersection here with the goal that I proposed. And I've talked about this on a couple of different occasions, is taking a look at how our program of studies at the high school aligns with complements and supports that vision of a graduate. And so this is the first, the first few boxes here. I changed the format, but I can tell you that the outcomes, the action steps and the timeline that this may seem familiar. And in fact, it is, it is the same, it's the same text that I provided in my original presentation to you back in the fall. So this first one was connected to strategic initiative 1.7 in our strategic plan. And more specifically, that was the pre K to 12 experience of students. And and you can see that connection there. The outcome of this particular goal was the development of recommendations to you as the school committee outlining any possible program, course or scheduling opportunities, changes or modifications at the high school. And the central idea behind this was to align with the school's vision, that vision of a graduate. And so when I presented this goal to you and the idea behind this goal back some months ago, you can see the the outline of the the action steps there and the respective timeline that followed. And originally, the hope, the thought was that in January, we would put together a steering committee that would form and take a closer look at the vision of the graduate at the stages that that was at at the time. Following that, the the intention there was to have that steering committee begin the work of the NEASK study, take a closer look at the, what would have been a more coming closer to a complete vision of the graduate. And also with that, taking a closer look at enrollment at the high school level. Because there's a, I think there's a, as a, there's an intersection there as well, too. And then you can see the other respective timelines. What the the golden or the goldenrod color, I guess, if you will, reflects is new. And and that is that is my recommendation to you in terms of adjustments for the timeline. And I will share with you that I had an extensive conversation with Linda about this and where she sees herself going with the respective, the adjustments that she's had to make with her, the vision of the graduate work and the whole NEASK process. And so that's a progress update that's down below here, the last, the last section. She has been working and and again, I don't watch slowed pace and rate. But she nevertheless has been pulling together both students and staff who have been working on the development of outcomes and mindsets. And all of this comes together. This is a different presentation for another time, specifically around the vision piece, but all of those become complimentary to the development of the vision of a graduate. She's really on course with the belief that that will be done or close to done by the fall, by November. And so what our proposal is, is to bring that vision of a graduate and it's and it's developmental, developmental phases to you before the end of this school year. At one of the meetings in June is what is right now what our time is. And so because of this adjustment in that timeline, there's also a necessary adjustment in the timeline of this goal. But it remains, and both Linda and I believe that this is really very important work that needs to unfold, that there needs to be a thorough review of the program of studies at the Wilmington High School. And as timely as can be, consideration of what the vision of the graduate, you know, ultimately becomes for the district. And so there are some revisions there. Goal number two was specific to the middle school program configuration. And I've spoken about this somewhat more recently than certainly that there, the last one. This also was connected to our strategic plan, you will recall, in the pre K to 12 experience. And, you know, taking a broader look at the expectations and in this case, the pathway that our students move through at the middle school level. The outcomes specifically were, you know, as noted here. And that's to provide you with any recommended changes to programs, schedules or organizational structures at the middle school in order to ensure that our program and the the entire experience of the middle school aligns. aligns with what we think is most important for service, service to our middle school students, our young adolescents. The action steps that I presented to you back in the fall for this goal are outlined there as a, as a recap. Pulling together a cross-section of representatives, that, that committee, that committee has been formed. And I'm pleased to be able to share with you that I think almost to every single person who volunteered, everyone is, is committed to moving forward with this work. And, and that's great news to be able to share. The timeline originally presented was a January, back in January to put out an invitation. That was delayed a little bit, but not by a lot. The steering committee has come together, as I said. And in fact, we have co-leaders for each of those groups. And I am meeting with, I think, all three sets of co-leaders in the next couple of days to really chart the course for these, for the, the, the three groups that have been formed. And you'll recall I shared that work plan with you previously. So based upon the, where, where things are at, where we are at right now currently, I, I, I am recommending some revisions to the timeline here. The work started in, in March, but I think that, given that we're for all intents and purposes, the first of May, revising this to the fall, as you can see there, I think is, is more realistic. The progress update, you can see down the, down the bottom there. And then finally, District Improvement Goal Three, Elementary School Building and Grade Level Configuration. The, the original idea behind this goal as presented to you was to take a specific look at, you know, our elementary grades and our school configurations. Knowing that Wildwood is on borrowed time, knowing that we had a capital plan that will be put out there for an analysis to find out what alternatives may be, if we need to pursue those for Wildwood, if that facility can't continue to operate. But as you can see here, there were a number of action steps that were, that, that I had presented and that were identified back, back in the fall and the respective timeline there. This one's a little bit more straightforward in, in that this, this goal completely has been placed on hold. And, and it, it is placed on hold because of the developments that we spoke about earlier with the MSBA. You can see the timeline above and you can see the clear connection with things unfolding on a parallel course with MSBA. It was back in February that we were, we were contacted by MSBA and it became clear that they were seriously considering our candidacy as an invitation into the program. And so as that unfolded, it's important to note that our participation in the MSBA program, and specifically because we've indicated a desire to pursue consolidation, really warrants this work unnecessary as a standalone goal. And it's unnecessary because it will have to be central to the work of the MSBA process and, and that work will commence in short order. So only meant to be intended as a, as a sort of broad overview of, of the three goals that I presented to you. I, I wish that overall I could share with you that some more momentum had, had been able to be sustained around all of these. But again, as we've talked about in, in other circumstances, unfortunately, just reflective of some of the continual struggles that we have ongoing. But to underscore, if not anything else, my commitment to, to all of these areas. Goal number three is now on a different course, but certainly goal one and two, I remain absolutely steadfast of the belief that they need to, they need to continue and it's my intention to do so. So with all of that, I'm happy to answer any questions if members of the committee may have.
Great. And I see you, Mrs. Burns. I just wanted to make one, a couple of, just a couple of quick comments that I had stated earlier in the year. But just as a reminder to the committee, we decided to stretch this evaluation cycle over two, it's over two years now, so we're stretching the five-step cycle over two years, which would mean a mid-cycle review would happen at the end of year one. And so we will be, kind of that'll be a chance to discuss the goals, give opinions and progress, ask questions, and then provide some feedback to Dr. Brand, May and June. So our mid-cycle will be May-June and we'll talk about how we want to provide some of that written feedback at a later date. But I just wanted to remind us all of, you know, where we are in this cycle. Mrs. Burn.
Thank, thank you. I just had a quick question. Now, because we've placed goal three on hold, Glenn, is there something else that you'd, you would replace it with? Or that you would want to kind of target since, I mean, I know that the first two goals are, are significant in, you know, significant, but I didn't know if there would be a, a third goal that you may have put on, may not have been as, as much of a priority as the elementary buildings and reconfiguration one that you might bring up from, you know, the ranks to, to target?
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a great and, and very fair question. And I, I, I think my, my immediate response to that is there should be, I think. And it's not that three is a magic number by, by any, but I think that what I would like to, in all honesty, what I, what I'd like to have the, the opportunity to do is to, and I, and I, we, we've talked briefly about this, but of course, time really hasn't permitted, and that is circle back to our strategic plan. And through, through a collective effort of reviewing that. And, and we, we are going to need to make some decisions within that plan. We've, we've obviously not had the time as a committee and, and us together to circle back to that plan. And, you know, as a point of, of reminder for our community, that's, that's a plan that, you know, ultimately is the district's plan, it's, it's your plan. And, you know, you, you as a governing body took action to approve that. And because of the circumstances of the last number of months, obviously, almost all work has been on hold with that. Not, not everything, and some of those have been touched upon here, but most of it. So what I would like to propose is to, in, in the coming weeks, you know, circle back to that plan and tease out what, you know, what I think and then propose to you as a committee, things would make, would make the most sense to prioritize. As we, we try and gather some, some traction on some of the elements within the plan, some of the initiatives within the plan.
Sounds, sounds great. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Mr. Raxdale.
Just want to add that I, I think that this is an example of, you know, many of our processes have been adjusted this year because of the, the, just the crazy nature of this year. You know, the school year was reduced and the, you know, the structured learning time and regulations being changed and MCAS being cut in halftime and grades three through eight. And lots and lots of adjustments have been made throughout the year. But the superintendent evaluation process is one area where I think it just hasn't, no one considers it important enough to get a look at how that might be appropriately adjusted for this year. And so I, I think that we're in a situation in which we're trying to go through the process as it exists and adapt it as best we can to, you know, all right, well, we still need to have goals and the school committee still needs to approve the goals and that we need to evaluate based on the goals. But it only makes so much, so much sense. And, you know, we can't go back and sort of say, well, you know, maybe the goal should have been just to, you know, put out the fires and keep the district going and get as many kids in buildings and for as much in-person learning as possible. It's like, in retrospect, maybe that's what the, the real goal was. But we're, we're working within this, you know, system and construct that really hasn't been rethought for, you know, the way that other aspects of the regulatory process that education works in Massachusetts has been worked through. So we work with what we have, but I think this is part of why it, it feels so strange. And we're, you know, we're just trying to go, you know, adapt the process as we can, but otherwise, you know, do it in the best way that, that it fits.
Thanks, Mr. Raxdale. Other comments or questions? Mr. Smaha?
Yeah, I'll just sort of to add on to what Mr. Raxdale just said. That's, I think, one of the things that's nice that we have, is we decided on the two-year sort of process. So we're not coming up with a, with a, with a final considering this year. So that's all my, my own comment. And I, and I think that, you know, I think, you know, there's, you know, thinking about the, you know, the work that Dr. Brand, you know, has done. You know, I think he deserves just a ton of credit for, for really pursuing all of these goals despite all of those things that Mr. Raxdale just said. So I'll add that.
Thanks, Mr. Smaha. And my, my other, as I look at these goals, especially the last one, and I think about all the work that has gone into the MSBA and all that is to come. I'm sitting here going, maybe shouldn't that be part of it? I mean, why are we not, why, it's almost like you have these goals, but then you're also doing 17 other projects beyond the goals that don't get captured in the goals. And so I wonder if it doesn't make sense to rethink that a little bit, to be, to sort of start to think through what, what this MSBA work is going to look like over the next, at least over the next year, obviously longer than that. And then again, just to, to comment on your leadership, as I've said many a time, but within that process and to be accepted in 15 out of 70, I mean, it's huge. And I, and I think that there needs to be a place for that in this evaluation to say, you know, you along with your team, but, but Dr. Brand was pushing this agent from the very beginning. We, let's look at these buildings, what's going on? I think that, that we need to account for that somewhere in this evaluation process. And so maybe we can talk about how to, how to structure that in a, in a third replacement goal or whatever. But I think that I don't want to just have you have these goals and then you're doing all these other projects on this, you know, it's just, it's a lot that goes into this and so.
If I may, and thank you, you know, you, you do raise a really good point and I, I didn't say it, but I will because you sort of opened that door. But there is, and I was reminded of this in the call with MSBA today. I mentioned earlier that, you know, we have the orientation for Module One. And I, I, I think I've shared with the committee before, I've, I've had the opportunity, the pleasure to be a part of MSBA projects in a couple of different phases in the past. That is to say, I've come into a district partway through a process that had started. But I was reminded today that one of the things that we will learn about very quickly is a task that's a big one in Module One is developing an educational plan. And that's not, that's for another conversation at another time. But it is, there are going to be some sizable tasks that are going to come very quickly. And maybe they are goals, maybe they're not, maybe they're a subset of one. But I do, I do appreciate you pointing that out and that will be probably the case. There's going to be some things that maybe they do become a goal outside of the process itself. So I thank you for acknowledging that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the update. Item B, School Choice Vote. Dr. Brand.
Sure, thank you. There is, sorry, just let me get to it here. In your packet, there is a memo, Item 10B, School Choice Vote. This is an annual vote that in public school districts across the Commonwealth are obligated to take under mass general law. It is, this memo largely speaking remains unchanged from the one that I presented to you a year ago. What's required here is that school committees take a vote in terms of a decision as to whether or not to become a, a school choice district and allowing students from other districts to, to effectively enroll in Wilmington. And so this is, this is something that does fall to your authority. And so that's what I'm seeking tonight is, and there's a recommended motion to you. As I outlined in the memo, there, I, I think that right now, I believe, in my opinion, there are, there continues to be a number of reasons why I don't recommend to you that we open up to school choice or to participate in the school choice program. And, and I try and outline some of those reasons there. I think we have a lot of things that are up in the air right now in terms of enrollment. For example, what we know to be true as in, you know, and we, we're contending with this, as you know, during the pandemic, is barely able to fit in all of our students at the elementary level with the current restrictions. We also know that we have, you know, fluctuations and changes in, in, in other ways throughout the district as well, too. And so for those reasons, it, it's my recommendation to you that at least at this juncture, we, we, we continue to not participate in the school choice program in Wilmington.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Mr. Raxdale.
This, I mean, this comes before us every year. And certainly in the past, we've said that, well, we don't really know if we have space. And I think that in the future, if the enrollment trajectory continues in the same, in the same direction, then it's something that we should rethink at least from that, from that perspective. Because if that's not the case, then we should at least be open to the possibility of, of doing this. However, given all the work that the district has to do right now, it's hard enough to do all the things we have to do. And adding something on that we don't have to do doesn't seem at all a wise decision right now. And it's certainly simpler to not have a school choice program that you have to administer than it is to have one. So I agree that this is absolutely not the time for us to approve school choice. But I think it's something that, that we do want to seriously consider in the future.
I would absolutely agree.
Thank you, Mr. Raxdale. I completely agree as well. Any other comments before we ask for a motion? All right, would someone like to make the motion? Mrs. Burns?
I move that, yeah, I, thank you. I move that the Wilmington School Committee vote to not participate in the state's school choice program because of a lack of available space to accommodate out-of-town students.
Is there a second? Mr. Smaha, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Ojero, FY20 End of Year Financial Report.
Thank you. In your, in your packet is the FY20 End of the Year Financial Report, Report from our auditing firm. Each fall, we have to put a report together, as I explained previously, that shows all the revenue that comes into the district and all the expenses that go out of the district. And then we have to have an auditing firm come in and just go over that report in detail to make sure everything's been accounted for properly and correctly. So you have in front of you that report. We did have one finding. It, it is the same finding we've had for quite a few years. And it has to do with the cost allocation methodology written down on paper. We've been using the same methodology and this relates to town. The town incur a certain cost that they allocate to the schools and that's included as part of the end of the year report. So we've used the same methodology since I've been here, but it's just not on paper yet. So the town accountant and I decided to work on that and then stuff happened. So we don't have anything in place right now, but that's something we're working on, so.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All right, thank you for that update. Item D, we have approval of superintendent's contract. Earlier this evening in executive session, we voted on this and it is, is the law that we vote on this in public. So we are voting on the approval of Dr. Brand's contract, which will then be signed by all of us, signed by Dr. Brand and posted online for, for the public. Is there a motion? Mr. Fenley, seconded by Mr. Smaha, all in favor of approving Dr. Brand's contract? That is unanimous. All right, any comments, questions? Thank you very much. Finally, Item 10E, we have, oh, Mr. Raxdale.
Just wanted to say that I wanted to thank Dr. Brand for the last three years. And I look forward to his leading our district for the next three years. And very, very happy to have him for another three.
Well, thank you. And if, and I'm sorry, I should have probably jumped in there to say, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. It has, it has been my pleasure to become a part of your community and to work with you for, most of you for the last three years. And I'm excited about the good work that started and hopefully returning back to a greater degree of normalcy to continue the important work and I think pursue the, the important opportunities that are ahead for Wilmington. So thank you for the opportunity. I sincerely appreciate it. Thank you.
My wait time has gotten, gotten a little too fast, so I'm just taking, I'm just taking a second here. All right. Item 10E, Town School Administration Building. Item 10E, Town School Administration Building Committee School, Building Committee, School Committee Representative. Mr. Ojero, can you just quickly talk through what that requires?
Sure. So this position, as, as you, you may be aware, we have a, a town hall school administration building project going on. So we have a, a committee that's working on that project. We've had, um, I believe two meetings so far, really to, I think it was two. Uh, but we've selected an owner's project manager. Uh, the next step is to select, um, architectural firm or design, designer services. So this representative from the school committee, it's about, um, maybe a meeting per month. Um, that'll typically, right now they're in Zoom, um, to, uh, work on this project with, um, some other um, residents, um, or to select men, uh, and so forth, and members of the permanent building committee. So it's, the commitment is about once a month for a meeting. Uh, might have a couple coming up shortly just because of the, uh, design services. Selection of can, uh, companies to come in to interview, then the interview and so forth. Uh, so that's kind of what, um, what's involved in this. And there's a sitting, there'll be a sitting meeting probably, like I said, monthly.
Great. Thank you very, very much. Um, so are there recommendations or volunteers? I have a recommendation, but I'll wait to see if there's a volunteer. Mr. Fenely, are you volunteering?
If, if nobody objects to my volunteering, I'd be, I'd be happy to, to serve on that.
I think you'd be a great representative. So, and we really appreciate that. No objection. That, that would have, I was actually going to say, Mr. Fenely? No. I think that's great.
Any excuse to spend more time with Paul.
I appreciate that. And I will, uh, let Juwachupuchoochee as the committee and the town manager know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellent. All right. And I'm moving right along, but I'm waiting just to make sure I'm not missing a hand. Okay, um. Oh, I did see, I did see Dr. Curdo here and I wanted to say thank you, but I don't see him any longer, but I did want to say thank you to him for his, um, for his work and his collaboration with us this year. Um, item 11, we have other reports. Are there any subcommittee reports? Mrs. Burns?
Um, I just want to, um, say that Friday, April 16th coming up, uh, MASC is holding their annual day on the hill. Um, again this year, well, this year it'll be done virtually. A topic for the discussion will be from pandemic to progress. What we lost, what we learned, uh, what can we build upon? It'll run from nine AM to 12. All is invited. Just sign up to the MASC, um, uh, website if you'd like to attend in part or for the, uh, three hours. Um, I'm not sure who will be there, but I know there's usually, um, state legislators who will discuss, um, uh, certain, uh, what's going on in the sta- at the state level. Um, and it gives the opportunity for school committees, um, across the Commonwealth to have, ask questions and, um, uh, strategize, uh, with the, the next step, um, and, um, you know, uh, how can we, how can we move forward in a positive direction for the education for our kids, um, and our students? Um, so I just wanted to give a shout out if anyone is interested in participating.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Burns. I will be there for a little bit. I think Dr. Brand will be there and I know, Mrs. Burns, you'll be there?
Yes. Yep.
So you can find that information right on the MASC website if you're interested in joining. Uh, Mrs. Newhouse?
I just wanted to, uh, give a reminder that the CPAC's having, um, a short business meeting tomorrow night starting at six. And then they're having their basic rights workshop at 6:30. Um, they are two separate, um, meeting links and they do ask for the basic rights workshop that, um, you go on and register. If anyone's looking for the information, it was emailed out, but if you didn't get it, feel free to either email me or you can, um, email the Office of Student Support Services and they can get you the information as well.
Thank you so much. Any other subcommittee reports? Mr. Samaha, we have not met. The equity subcommittee has not met, but there is a meeting coming up, I believe, on the 28th?
Yeah. So there's, there's tentatively, uh, the 28th is, is a tentative date. I haven't, um, put together the agenda nor sent it over to town hall or anything like that, but that's, uh, the tentative date right now.
Thank you. Anything else for subcommittees? Like a lot, I feel like I've been in lots of subcommittee meetings. There should be more to update. Thank you. Um, item 12, is there any correspondence? Mrs. Burns?
Um, I do have a correspondence that I'll read into the record. Um, it's from Melissa Plowman, uh, to Superintendent Brand, uh, and, uh, Chair Bryson. Good evening, Dr. Brand and Mrs. Bryson. I am writing you this evening to express concern with the currently identified timeline for the middle school steering committee. If I am understanding correctly, the committee was formed and met initially for the first time in early March. A timeline for the completion of step one is cur- set currently in mid-June, July, which is approximately four months of time. Step one, if I am also understanding correctly, is a review of the research and understanding best practices for middle school programming. I am confused and concerned why it would take the steering committee this amount of time for this portion of our review pro- uh, excuse me, of our review process. That seems like an excessive amount of time and I feel strongly that our middle school students and staff cannot afford to lose that amount of time on reviewing the research. I feel that steps two and three should require much more time than step one. I would like to ask the school committee and Dr. Brand to strongly reconsider the timeline proposed and to add this important topic to an upcoming school committee agenda so that we can potentially move our timeline up for this essential work. Our middle school is in great need at this time and we cannot afford a four-month timeframe for review and research. Respectfully, Melissa Plowman.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. And I, Dr. Brandon, do you want to, I was going to say, I will talk with Dr. Brandon, make sure we get a response to Mrs. Plowman, but Dr. Brandon, do you want to say something?
Uh, no, I was not going to comment on.
Okay. All right. So we will work together to get at a response. And if anyone has any comments, please send them directly to me or to Dr. Brand as we work on, on that. Thank you. And, Dr. Brand?
Well, um, after almost, uh, six years in the district, um, we, uh, this evening are, uh, saying goodbye to Ms. Tristan Dixie, uh, who is stepping down from her role as executive assistant to superintendent and to the school committee. Although she will continue on for just a little bit longer to assist the district, um, in the coming weeks. She has served our families, our staff, our community, and most importantly, uh, the school committee well. And we are thankful for her work and support. I remember that it was about three and a half years ago, uh, or so, uh, when I were, was watching these meetings at home, uh, through both the, my interview process uh, to become your superintendent and then being appointed. And I know that I was intrigued and one of the things that caught my attention was the number of times that members of the committee mentioned Tristan. Tristan, can Tristan do that? Can Tristan take care of that? She'll be able to do that. Um, boy, have I come to understand what that was all about and why that was so. Uh, she, Tristan, has served, uh, as the executive assistant to the superintendent and the school committee. Um, and in that role, uh, really I think anyone in that role has serves as the glue, the Velcro, the duct tape, whatever you want to put on that list that helps keep the work of both the superintendent's office and the school committee as the governing body going. Um, it is impossible to imagine, uh, I think in the public realm, what goes on behind the scenes to try and make possible what in a typical year is 20, maybe 22, 24 meetings, uh, let alone probably twice that many, uh, in this past year. But as we say goodbye to Tristan, uh, who will be officially stepping down from this role, uh, we will, we will miss her, but we welcome Tracy Ingrisal, who's with us tonight on the call. Uh, and she will be taking over, uh, officially in the coming days for Tristan. Um, unfortunately, we are obviously not in person tonight. Uh, Tristan, we do have a small gift, uh, and a card for you and I'll be sure to get that, uh, to you, uh, in the, in the next short while. But thank you Tristan for all of your time, your energy and your commitment to Wilmington and the Wilmington Public Schools over the last six years.
You can't see my face and that's, that's probably a good thing right now. I'm really excited and, uh, I just want to thank you all very much for a great, um, you know, five years and it really has been an honor working with all of you. Um, I, I just enjoy, you know, being with you, uh, every couple of weeks. And you have just all treated me so well. Uh, so I just wanted to say thank you very much and, uh, I really appreciate it.
Thank you Tristan. I feel like if we were in person, we would be applauding or something. And I know that that would not sound good on Zoom, but I know I'm, other people can step in, but I know, well, um, we, we will miss you and we are grateful for all that you have done to, to keep us moving forward. And we know that you will not be a stranger. And so we would like, we did want to have sort of a proper goodbye and hopefully we'll stop in and see you over the next few days as we, as we sign some documents and, and say a goodbye to you then. But thank you very, very much on behalf of Wilmington and the Wilmington School Committee. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. And I also did want to say, I think you're in very good hands with Tracy. So I think you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All right. Uh, future school committee dates and notable agenda items. April 24th is the annual town election, eight to eight. April 28th, regular session meeting, 7:00 PM in the large instruction room at the high school. May 1st is the annual town meeting, 9:00 AM at Shriners. And May 13th is the Wilmington High School Prom at 6:00 PM in Wyndham, New Hampshire. And I think, oh, there's more, sorry. May 20th. This is a longer list than usual. May 28th, Wilmington Public Schools Annual Virtual Art Show, opening day. June 4th is the Class of 21 Scholarship Night at 6:30 PM. And June 6th is the Class of 21 Graduation at 1:00 PM. I think that does it. And if there is nothing further, we need one more motion for adjournment. Mr. Samaha, thank you. Seconded by Mr. Ragsdale. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thanks everyone. Good night.
Good night, everyone. Thank you so much.
Night, everyone.